So, good evening, everybody. I wanted to welcome everybody to the Building Industry Association Housing Industry Candidate Forum for Clark County. Specifically, we'll be talking about the candidates for Clark County Commissioner, both in District Three as well as in District Four. Do self introduction here. My name is Jamie Housley. I'm a land use attorney with the law firm of Jordan Remus in Vancouver and been on the Building Industry Association of Clark County Board and will be moderating the event this evening. And I'll go ahead and want to recognize our sponsor for this evening, New Tradition Homes. So because we only have two candidates, one from each district here, this will be a pretty casual conversation this evening. I'll go ahead and have each candidate give a brief self introduction of around three to five minutes. And then we'll go ahead and launch into some, some questions that have been pre distributed to the counselors beforehand or the candidates beforehand. You please note that there's a chat feature as this is Zoom. And if we've hopefully will have some time, if you want to have any questions asked, please put them in that chat feature and I will do my best to try to ask them, time permitting. So with that, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Gary and he can give a self introduction and we can hopefully go from there. So Gary.
Well, thank you. And I wanted to start by asking, how many people do you have on board on this Zoom session? Do we, do we know? Do you have a number?
Well, we don't really have a number. I think Ryan can probably answer exactly on this, but this is also streaming live on Facebook. Yeah, I think he's talking to her.
Okay. Well, I was just curious, maybe you could tell me at some other time, but I want to really thank you for inviting me and, and having what will be hopefully an armchair conversation. For those of you who don't know me, and I'm hoping that you are starting to get to know me anyway. I had been retired when I moved up here about four years ago. I had a number of different occupations, some of which were at the exact same time. So I really worked, especially during the early war years, two jobs at a time. Cause I was a reservist and it was hard because I had commands and was working full time on my reserve jobs, even though I had a full time job at the court. So I was a retired deputy district attorney. I was basically a prosecutor, primarily focused most of the years on special victims, as you may have seen some TV shows about that, but children and women as sexual abuse victims, battering, murder, anything that involved children. I prosecuted those cases for many years, but I also had homicides, major vendor drug narcotics cases, criminal street gangs. I had a fuller range of cases as a prosecuting attorney. I left that when I was appointed to be a Superior Court Judge in California. I remained in the criminal division. So I basically was a trial attorney in felony cases. And over the years, I had about 200 jury trials. Hi Karen.
Oh, and my apologies.
So I did a lot of work in criminal law for decades in the civilian world. And I actually did some of that in the military on active duty too, as a judge advocate. But I branched off in 2001. I was a battalion commander in psychological operations or what's now called information operations, a special operations unit. I later was qualified in civil affairs, working with indigenous governments at the cabinet level and some of my assignments, both in Bosnia as well as Afghanistan, all within special operations community. I later became a general officer. I had several commands at the battalion brigade and general officer level, as well as some conventional deputy commanding positions, ending up retiring out of Korea from Eighth Army. So I had a wide array of assignments around the world, two combat tours. I had a lot of education by the Department of Defense, a lot of joint senior training, National Defense University, as well as the Army War College. I have a master's in national security. So a wide, broad breadth of experience. Some of my assignments took me to embassies. I worked in the embassy in Sarajevo, as well as Kabul, Afghanistan, and working pretty much at the ministerial level, the cabinet level with indigenous governments and other contributing nation embassy personnel. So that in a nutshell is my background. And obviously I've been a county counselor now for almost two years and enjoying every minute and very humbled by the experience. And again, thank you for this opportunity to speak with you.
I appreciate that, Gary. So Karen, hello, this evening, we're just doing self introductions at the moment. And maybe I'll go ahead and have you do that. And then we can maybe get a little bit more rules for the road there, get you caught up.
So. Okay, that's great. And my apologies, I have no idea why I had in mind the wrong time, but I did. So I will introduce myself as a person who is normally early, because that is normally the case. I grew up in, in Kansas and I enjoyed going to school there where I went to high school and, and got a couple of degrees there. And then I went off to Texas, got my PhD there at Texas A&amp;M. And that's also where I met my husband, now my husband of 42 years. And we have four grown children. And right now we're taking care of our 11 month old grandchild, which is an experience that I had forgotten how energizing that is when you're the one in charge. Wow, he's an active little soul. So I value education. I suppose you can tell, is evidenced by the fact that I really put that first in my, in my life for a good while. And I got many different types of scholarships and research assistantships in order to subsidize all of that effort. I should tell you too, that when I was a kid growing up in Kansas, I remember working from the time that I was in junior high school at Kansas Farmer Magazine. And I typed magazine copy back then. And most of you probably don't even remember carbon paper, but I had seven carbon papers and did eight copies, typing hard on that typewriter at one time, saved up my money from that. And I did two things with it. One was I made the last payment on my mother's home that my father had built. And secondly, I bought myself a transistor radio. So those are my, my memories of yesteryear. Professionally then, my background deals almost entirely with business and pretty much from every angle. So I first became a professor of business in the areas of organization theory and labor law and, and human resources management and so on. Taught various types of anti discrimination that would benefit the employer so that they were cognizant of taking appropriate precautionary measures to avoid their own litigation. I had a small business, which I served as an expert witness in both federal and district courts. And again, it was primarily in the areas where I was teaching business, but also served as a management consultant and dealt primarily with project management at that time, which I really enjoy because I think that enables a business to get a good control and handle on their objectives and, and how they're going to achieve their, their goals for whomever, whether it's their owners, their stockholders, whomever that their focus is. I have been fortunate to earn quite a few awards for both the organizations that I worked for. For example, at the university, I received a number of recognitions, including one from the BIA, by the way, that was for relationship of the university, in particular, my college with the community. And I had, he calls himself the CEO. It's a little different title than you typically see. But the CEO of the BIA, I had serving on my advisory board. And so it was just a natural opportunity for communication and making some really good things happen between the community and, and the university. And then my college was also named one of the top 18, actually in the world, for innovation by European CEOs. And we did that on what I would call a very lean budget with students who were eager to learn, but not of the demographic like you would find at MIT or Harvard or whatever. It was at Cal State San Bernardino and they were hardworking people and, and we really accomplished a lot. I've been a volunteer in SCORE, which you may have known someone who utilized SCORE in their business. We work as a mentor with particularly growing budding businesses that are startups or with established organizations that are trying to make the decision, do I really want to grow or do I want to stay where I am right now and make my living where I have a little bit more balanced lifestyle? Or whatever their questions are that they're dealing with as individuals. But I did that in the Northwest, that type of volunteer work and really did enjoy that. I've done, as a university life offers, a number of other things that allowed me to work with the community, like serving as a Baldridge Quality Examiner. So I would be sent out to businesses that had applied for the award and work with them to see where they stood on their quality and either help them to achieve the next level or put them up for recognition by the president. So it was, it was a great experience there. So that's my business background. That's the background I wish to apply primarily at the county.
Wonderful. Well, well, thank you, Karen, and I'm glad that you could join us this evening. I would also be remiss if I did not mention that we did invite the other candidates for these two positions, Mr. James, who's running in District Three, and Mr. Little, who's been running in District Four, but both of them declined our offer. I also need to mention, I guess the chat feature has been turned off. So if anybody's got any questions, there is a Q and a section down there at the bottom and you could place your questions there. And again, time permitting, hopefully I'll be able to, to get to them. So again, just because it's going to be the two of us this evening, and this is sort of how it went at our last one, last evening and during the last panel, it's going to be a pretty, pretty casual conversation between us, us three. But I did want to begin with asking a couple of questions that were pre distributed to potentially all four candidates here. The first question I want to hit on is sort of apropos to the, what, what we're experiencing here live in this, this sort of Zoom reality. And that's, you know, effectively due to the pandemic, everybody has had to adapt to new ways of doing business. Electronic filing and paperwork, virtual meetings such as this have sort of become normal course. And it's been highlighted that this may be an opportunity for local governments to adopt more efficient practices to, to help through our, our industry, through the permitting process. How might you suggest to take advantage of this unique situation to transform government services? And I think with this first one, I'll go ahead and maybe start with, with Gary, since he's already currently in the position, then I'll move to get Karen's thoughts on the matter.
In that case, I'm going to turn on the light behind me.
So thanks for that question. And I, I'm always impressed learning about Karen's, the details of her background, although I do some of the highlights, but she embarrassed me because she reminded me that I didn't just work. I do have a wife and I've been married for 36 years. And also we had five children. We did lose one at age two, but we have adopted two. And I have four children that I raised and are great adults, two, two are still serving in the military. So I did have to throw that in because I completely forgotten. I'm hoping my wife's not watching and.
I hope not neither.
So this has been both a curse and a blessing. So I'll talk more about the blessing part as we try to sort through everything, the opportunities that this remote world has provided. And certainly the building industry has seen some of the worst of it too. One of the things we discovered with our staff being at home, they weren't answering the phone, nor were they returning phone calls. It took a while before we, we got wind of that and the manager took some steps to correct that. So those are some growing pains, but you know, I'm on the lower Colombian Fish Recovery Board, the Regional Transportation Committee as well. And, and we have a lot of remote membership. And I was just helping the RTC write some new code to allow for remote distancing in, if you will, and especially for the, for me, the lower Colombian Fish Recovery Board. You know, we go all the way to Bonneville Dam and out to Astoria. That can make for a long drive. And I actually flew myself a couple of times to some remote locations. So, you know, savings in transportation, saving in time, the ability to hit multiple regional meetings relatively easily, easily is a godsend and a money saver. So we're hoping to be able to capture who works best at home and what opportunities we can get from that. We've also discovered, and again, one of the detriments to developers and builders is our software just doesn't work. And I'm not talking about the Zoom or whatever web based system we're, we're talking about, but we had another line item for this last budget that we're working on now in our permitting department. Their software just doesn't work. It's never worked right. We never got our money's worth out of the vendor. So people, you know, if a stormwater plan has been inputted and submitted electronically and we've got it, for some reason, it doesn't get shared very well with other permit staff. And then you have to bring it in, you know, and wait a month before you get an appointment to print it out and bring it in. So we've had some glitches and also I would say is the manager is really on top of this as best she can, as we discover what has caused more friction and more delays to eliminate that. In the very beginning, we had some hiccups on doing virtual inspections and getting permits issued. We had some staff members that were quite frankly, doing their own thing and not really following the direction and guidance of the manager and the council to, because we wanted to issue permits, despite the governor's at the time, very inconsistent rules about what could move forward and what couldn't. We were really trying to get the permit in the system and move it along. So we saw some friction there with some individual staffers. They had to be retrained on what we intended. So the virtual inspections is best we could do them. We tried to do that. So there's, there's always opportunities across the board that we're looking for. And I will tell you this, we, we've got a lot of change coming. I think our current county manager really understands the challenges and the, and the very poor reputation of our, particularly our permitting department. But code, code enforcement is about the same. We're going to have some significant personnel changes. I think that's the only way we're going to be able to move forward. That's not for public dissemination yet. It hasn't actually occurred yet, but it will be. We're going to have some opportunities to change a culture and look for some professionalism within that, both of those departments, but primarily permitting at this point. So I'm hoping that we, you will see some significant changes in the near future. So anyway, I hope I touched on enough points to answer your question. I'll turn it over back to you or to Karen.
Yeah, no, thank you, Gary, for the very, very thoughtful answer. And I guess the same, same question to you, Karen, but maybe not because you're not in the position itself. But you know, what have you seen in your travels in the virtual world that you could bring to the, the county council and hopefully implement there from either, as Gary said, a cultural standpoint, or maybe just a practical standpoint?
Well, what, Gary, I appreciate so much of what you said. That's really very interesting. And there are so many issues that boil down to having the person at the top understand either how to implement in a new environment or what the expectations are. And without that being very clear and accepted by the people at the top of the department, it doesn't work, does it? So good for you for, for making that begin to happen. You know, this whole business of remote work has been in the workplace for many, many years. And it's been actually quite controversial, largely surrounding the question of productivity and how to measure it exactly, so that the organization is assured of that productivity. Just as an aside, it's kind of interesting to me that the APA, which is the American Psychological Association, has learned that within the last few months, 76% of all of their counseling has become remote. And they had never had an expectation of that. And beyond that, another 16% is a combination of remote and in person. So that takes us almost to the 100% mark, doesn't it? And they're making a commitment to stay in that mode, to the best of their ability, and simply improving it. And the reasons are largely what you were voicing, Gary. They're able to go more places more quickly, do more in a day in different locales. And all of that is such a benefit if it is implemented correctly. So let me just mention a couple of things about that implementation. One is that policies to support remote work need to be constructed in such a way that productivity really is ensured, right along with ensuring data privacy. And without both of those things in place, it won't work. And this, the system after COVID would have to go back really to the, the way it was. But if, if those two things are brought under control, then I think you can kind of roll forward more easily with some of the other things that management needs to do, things such as, this is for certainly a simple item to builders, but setting a schedule. Without individual workers having a schedule, you know, they may see, oh yeah, the TV is available there. I really need a snack or whatever hits their fancy. And that's, you know, clearly not going to work if there is a firm schedule in place. Then there needs to be a dedicated home office space. And I remember 30 years ago, when before technology was developed and we were talking about remote work, there would be actual inspections by the organization going out to ensure that the workers did have a dedicated space so that they weren't working at their kitchen table or, or in their PJs and their house slippers or whatever, but that there was a definite space that they had set up. They really, the man, on the management side, need to err also on the side of over communicating, maybe even as compared to when it's in person on those progress updates. Because if you are over communicating or communicating extensively, let me put it that way, there are going to be the needed checkups with people so that we know that goals and standards are not being just let go, like how many, how frequently they will, are willing to answer the phone within however many seconds is established. And you need to also have a lot of video calls between the management and the employees so that you are assured of how the employee is working, because that may just be how they're presenting themselves to the public. And certainly from a governmental point of view, that's important. So those are a few things.
Great, well, wonderful. I think those were both excellent thoughts and excellent suggestions. So I'm going to move to the, the next question. And this involves what was called the informally, I guess formally too, the City Gate Report. And this report, I believe, predated Gary's time on the council and, and Karen, hopefully you may be aware of this, but effectively on March 15th of 2018, after about a year of a deep digest or deep, deep dive, the City Gates and Associates prepared a report and delivered it to the county, which was called the Evaluation of Permit Center Operations. And it had a bunch of recommendations to be made to help the permitting system become more efficient. And subsequently, there was an oversight committee of stakeholders and staff was convened to, to implement that. I served as on that for a time being, but the process seemed to have stalled out without much substantial progress. So I guess the question is to Karen, if, if elected, what would you do to sort of breathe new life back into the, that report and the recommendations there? Because at least from the, the housing industry side, there was a lot of really quality suggestions there that could help speed up the process and, you know, hopefully enable us to deliver more affordable housing more quickly.
Jamie, I have not read the recommendations, although of course I have heard of them. If I may ask you real quickly as a follow up, did you, do you find now that those recommendations need an update or would they still be sufficient?
Well, I think other than, you know, maybe the adding on to the first question of implementing some of the, the technology aspects of, you know, you know, permitting by phone, for instance, for corrections or something. I, I think that there's still a lot of fundamental things that are, are in there that need to be addressed. Some of them are cultural, like Gary alluded to. But that there's some other things that are just, you know, truly good suggestions that kind of have been left on the shelf that are kind of be ready to be pulled down and, and worked on.
Well, my experience has been that when there are good recommendations that are not implemented, there's usually a problem at the top of the department. And that's where I think the push needs to start. And too often there are charges that, well, you know, somebody who's down at the, the lower end of the department just isn't working fast enough or sufficiently. And that is not the problem. The problem is, is at the top. And until there is a strong sense of accountability put in place for that individual, both with on the, within the management side and in my opinion from council, there probably won't be that change. So my commitment to you would be to be a member of council that would be very happy to help exert with the team, the, the type of accountability that brings those good recommendations to fruition and, and to actuality. And I, I've got to say that with Gary, I know he is a, someone who is a team player, willing to work with Eileen as chair, as am I. The majority on the council would, I, I think, have a little bit different mindset than the council does right now. I don't know that, I don't know exactly how to describe it, except I see it as a pro business, a pro that wants to see business be successful. And the best way to do that is by having the, the government that is there to support it, not become bigger and bigger with more and more regulations and ways to protect you from becoming too successful or violating some kind of rule. But instead to have that cultural mindset that the reason that we're here is to. But instead, to have that cultural mindset that the reason that we're here is to support you and make you successful as a business for yourself and for the county residents. Because those two things, as we all know, can happen together. So what I'm saying is that together, we would work for staff about accountability. And I must say too, that I would look for your feedback all through the process. I will mention again that my phone number is always accessible. And if it's taking five weeks or eight weeks or two days for y'all to get an appointment with the county staff, I'm not gonna know unless someone tells me. So please, just communicate. It's not complaining. It's letting us know what's happening and I would greatly appreciate that.
Thank you, Karen. Gary, City Gate Report, what do you think should be done with it?
Well, so first of all, I want to say, I'm going to speak very candidly and add a little bit to this. But I think Karen hit all the right points. And I think just intuitively, she knows what needs to be done. So part of this is a charter issue. I mean, in the permitting department, I'll just focus on them. Belongs to the manager. It's an executive branch. So I can't just go right VFR direct, using a piloting term, and say, hey, your systems are not working. Fix it. I can't do that. But I can go to the manager and say that. And I will tell you that, so we've had a manager switch. And we did some switching around in permitting, if you recall, when we pulled Mitch out to code. But I had tapped to the manager at the time, and I gave him some examples of what I had done as a commander, because there's a lot of parallels in how you, organizations, on how organizations can work. And I had encouraged him to reach down and be more directive to the directors on what needed to be done and by when. So, and that didn't happen. But we lost that manager. We have a new one. And I will tell you, there isn't a week that goes by when I'm not talking to the manager about these issues. So our systems aren't working. They need to be put in place. And the report had just come out when I had joined the council. And I had very proudly remembered sneaking a document to the BIA showing, here are the changes that we're gonna have, basically a model for a permit, concurrent review instead of consecutive review, things that would really expedite and be efficient for the permitting process. And I was hoping that would all happen. But of course, we lost the manager. We had the pandemic. There are a lot of reasons, personnel changes. There are a lot of reasons, but no good excuses. So we are reinvesting in that right now. There's been a lot of discussion. We are demanding accountability. You know, it gets to the point where, okay, do the three of us as counselors or five of us as counselors, how many can agree? Because I want to get to this. We need to say to our county manager, this is your top priority. Fix it. Put these systems in place that we had talked about that came out in the report and all the other nuances that follow along on good ideas. You know, the culture is there. You know, there's power struggles. We get lots of inconsistent answers between staff members to people submitting for permits. You know, that has to be fixed. And I will tell you, I actually heard that we are not in the public service. We're not here to serve the community. And oh my God, really? You know, why are you in your position if you're not there to facilitate the person getting a permit? So between looking at costs, but primarily having systems in place that will push the permit through in a painless and a quick way, we need to really focus on that. We haven't had three counselors willing to do that. I think we will in the future. And I promise you that I'm going to give that renewed focus. But you know, every week, I'm already working on it. And I'm really optimistic. There are going to be some very significant changes. They're already occurring in small ways. Like I mentioned, the people weren't answering the phone. They now have twenty-four hours to call back. So they've been giving some metrics to make, whether or not the director and managers hold them to it. That's what we'll be focusing on. And like Karen said, the feedback we get from you is so important. And I know the reluctance, and I've heard it from individual home builders to developers. We don't want to complain because we're afraid we'll be put in the penalty box by staff. And you know, I experienced that in the military too, you know, squeaky wheel. You know, am I going to go to the bottom of the inbox as a result of raising a complaint? I know there are fears out there. And quite frankly, I think some of them are justified. And I'm digging into some of that. But if you do converse to me or another counselor and say, hey, here are the problems I am having, you know, that can be taken directly to the manager without attribution going to a specific person who's trying to get a permit. But we need this feedback. And quite frankly, you know, I'm counting on it. And I am counting on doing a full court press with my other counselors in the upcoming year. Once we get through some of these personnel issues, that'll be very public pretty soon.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I think we'll move on to the third pre-distributed question. Then I'll kind of follow up with a fourth one that'll come on the tail end of that. But this question relates to housing affordability. And you know, the Building Industry Association of Washington, much less our own local association, Building Industry of Clark County, this is, you know, a very primary function of our industry group is to try to deliver affordable housing to Washingtonians and more specifically to us here in Clark County. It is a goal of the Act, the Growth Management Act. Unfortunately, it's been often given short shrift or other goals in the Act have been given priority by the hearings board and the courts. But with all that being said, how would you define housing affordability? And what role do you think that the county has in addressing affordability here locally? And I'll maybe start with Gary on that and then move to Karen.
So, and we have a consultant right now. We're about to put together a stakeholder group to follow on this, on the consultants' work, looking for all the avenues, the levers, you know, whether we can offer incentives, whether we need to change zoning, whether we need to change different permitted uses within different areas. So we're really exploring that in detail. At the same time, in a different, for the Growth Management Act, we're doing, you know, trying to find out how many buildable lands we have right now. And quite frankly, everyone's got their own idea of how to do it better. My opponent has these ideas and I don't, you know, I think it's a violation of the Growth Management Act, some of what he's planning or promoting. And quite frankly, it'll completely screw up our buildable lands model if we start putting restrictive covenants on rural property for development. So I want to just say this, as far as affordable housing, you know, nationally, we have millions, we're in the hole of millions of homes that need to be built. You know, we're hoping to get a more accurate number with, from our consultant and through the consultant for the buildable lands model on how many housing units we're short. But off the cuff, it's thousands. And if you don't have inventory, then you've got a shortage and prices go up. One of the interesting tidbits I just learned today, because I asked our, I wanted to find out how much assessed value has increased in our county, you know, between all the permit costs, impact fees, you know, you name it. It's a pretty expensive proposition. But I wanted to know, well, we're homeowners getting hit on. Because there's some false narratives out there as to why we have a structural deficit and what we need. You know, obviously, Democrats in general want to just increase taxes to tax their way out of any holes that they may be in. Our hole that we're in right now has to do with Portland and the fact that we have about twenty-five percent of our tax leakage. That drives our costs up across the board. We are short with the taxing structure we have in Washington State. We are shorted twenty-five percent of our general fund because of our loss of sales taxes. The only way we can fix that is to have everyone buy locally, which isn't going to happen, including our builders who are going to Oregon and buying construction material. The only way it's really practically going to happen is if we have some balance in governance, meaning a Republican governor getting back the Senate. So we can propose that we retain about point eight, point one-eight percent of our taxes that we already collect. If we could retain that instead of sending it to Olympia, then we are out of that hole. We'll get back that general fund money. So inventory is the main avenue. I want to get a mix of densities, a mix of homes from high-end to starter homes. We need them all. And we need to be able to put them in locations where it would fit. And I know our developers do a great job of planning communities and developing those different, whether it's a condo, row house, apartments, small homes. You know, our developers know where to put it. So we need to work on that. I will tell you, there's a small initiative too, that we're just at the beginning of. You know, last year, we did get the opportunity to retain about a quarter of one percent of tax. And we're going to partner probably with the Vancouver Housing Authority in Vancouver. All the cities unfortunately decided to retain that money. We were hoping they wouldn't because then the county would be able to get it. But we'll be able to apply that towards affordable housing, which will mainly equate to that housing for the homeless. You know, basically, that kind of housing that is subsidized. You know, and you asked the question, basically, what do we look like as far as a formula? You know, everyone kind of uniformly says, you don't want to spend more than thirty percent of your income on rent or your mortgage. And obviously, again, Portland really is a killer for us because a lot of the formulas include the counties in the Portland metropolitan area that drive some of those formulas to not make a whole lot of sense for Washington State. So we need a broad spectrum. It all boils down to building our inventory, opening the aperture to get inventory out there, and that will lower costs in the long run. You know, we've artificially raised it because of not allowing development in some areas, making land scarce, driving the cost of land up. You know, all those are artificial impacts on the cost of housing. So I want to get back and I'll end on this. So the assessed value, and it's in of almost seventy billion dollars in Clark County now. Surprisingly, I didn't realize it was that much. But that has risen in one year by six, almost six and a half percent of assessed value. So the assessor is, you know, this false narrative that, oh, we're not keeping up with the cost of living. Our property taxes and our assessed value is more than keeping up with the increase in the cost of living. It's the loss of sales tax to Portland that's really caused this deficit. Assessed value is over seventy billion dollars right now, and that's a six-point-four percent increase over two thousand and nineteen. Long answer, but we have a lot to do. We have a lot of inertia to do it, working with you to get those homes, those housing units built.
Now, I appreciate that, Gary. Before I turn to you, Karen, maybe I'll editorialize a little bit there. And you know, I think the inventory, you kind of hit the nail on the head to some extent. And it's a supply and demand problem, right? Pre-pandemic, our county was experiencing about, you know, less than a three-month inventory of homes out there on a county-wide basis. And now we're down to something like less than a month of inventory, which is, you know, an all-time record. And you know, maybe we're a bit of a victim of, or maybe a successful in the COVID world that people deciding maybe to relocate from other areas of the country or from the Portland metropolitan area to Clark County for, you know, more space. But certainly, you know, we're in a very, we were in a dire situation pre-pandemic with the inventory. And now that's been exacerbated further to very, very dire levels. And so I think that that's a testament that we have a lot of work to do. And it's good to hear that the county's engaging on that matter and putting together a group to look at what, every arrow we can shoot at this. So with that, Karen, thoughts on this matter? What, housing affordability to you?
Mine is probably a bit redundant, but to start with the definition that you ask about, I guess I look at it as there being maybe three different levels or types. One of them is housing that is designed for the homeless. And that's not what I think of as affordable housing unless it's so designated. The second area would be subsidized housing, which again, I don't think of as affordable housing unless it is so designated. I think of affordable housing as one of the things that you mentioned, Gary, of there being the range of homes, condos, apartments, all types of housing in different price ranges, in different places within the county that are available to people. And that would be at a price that they can afford at the lower end of that range if they are within the middle or lower income group. So that's more or less the way I think of it. And as far as what is the county's role, we certainly, I think, need to continue to recognize that construction is an essential function and have that mindset as we deal with construction. And that housing is critical for our community, along with buildable lands in order to diversify both for housing and for local job opportunities. And in addition, you mentioned, Gary, those residential impact and development fees. Wow, what an impact on housing cost. And that is something that is within the county's domain, I think, to be examined, reviewed, and future ones avoided to the extent that is possible. And that is not the direction that it is going now, as I understand it. The third is what we talked about in a prior question of time to permit, which has got to have continuous improvement if we believe, as I do, that time is money. And if we have excessive costs built in there for the builders, then of course, that's going to be passed right along to the consumer. And pretty soon, what could have been affordable housing isn't affordable anymore because of the intrusion of county fees and time to permit that is so bothersome. And then regulatory burden should always, I believe, be reduced rather than us figuring out at the county how to increase it. And that seems to be kind of a mindset sometimes with some staff. And having that be the culture, as you were using that word earlier, that goes the opposite direction to reduce it, ends up helping to reduce fees, reduce time, reduce all the things that make what would have been affordable housing not affordable any longer. So that I hope is my perspective on the question. And I think getting in tune with some of the suggestions that you talked about that had been made a couple of years ago and seeing what we can do to really implement that. We know that all of those things are going to be making a difference for affordable housing because of your goals and identified mission. And I say, when I say yours, I mean from the builder's perspectives.
Yeah, no, appreciate that. Thank you. The follow-up question to this, and this... Um, the follow up question to this, uh and this this we did not distribute to you, but this I think Gary touched on that a little bit is. The uh Growth Management Act update that's that's coming. If you are elected or reelected in Gary's case to the council, you guys will be embarking on. Um, the next GMA update and, you know, personally, having experienced uh. Three of them myself, I can tell you that it's uh, you know, sort of an arduous process. Um, there's, there's a a lot going on there. Um, what? What would you bring to the table uh in terms of, you know, really focusing in on? That GMA goal that's striving to to get housing affordability in into Clark County. Um, you know, and I I agree, Karen, you know, personally and professionally with your perspective that, uh, you know, a a affordable housing is. Um, to the industry people, that means missing metal, you know, like housing that's uh attainable for. Uh, the average citizens, not uh those those types of units that are necessarily uh either subsidized or for. Um, you know, lower income folk. But what what could the county do as part of the the GMA update that you would certainly be engaged in to um help alleviate? Um, that that issue and really stress that goal um in in the adoption of the next plan. And I'll start with Karen here.
Wait, you know, the that GMA has several goals. What is it thirteen or I don't remember exactly?
Yeah, there's thirteen along with the Shorelines Act, which is called the fourteenth goal.
There you go. So and one of those is the uh economic growth or economic viability or something to that effect. And I I I think that a number of these goals actually interrelate. Because if we have economic viability, where we have growth of small business. And we have an increase in emphasis on that in terms of implementation as well. We are also going to do better on the affordable housing side because we are. Providing a a situation where people who are from Clark County can be employed in Clark County and. All of that just it it just all fits together in a in a a good way if we allow that to happen and and push for it frankly. In in implementation. So when it's um, when it's updated, it also needs to be adopted in a manner that avoids. Um, litigation and hopefully prevents the need for litigation. And that has not been done in the past and presents a real uh problem and a a sense of intrusion. Into achievement of any of the goals and it kind of sideswipes the attention of staff in ways that are. Are not productive for really supporting the housing industry as it should. Um, the plan should uh provide long range policy for managing growth and development along with. The environment and available resources and having that uh. Plan for long range growth is something that I have to be honest with you. I'm pretty concerned about. When I hear about our current status in that regard. And I I have not had access to the uh detailed records that show really where we are on that now. But I I do not have a sense of them being where they should be in order to uh uh accommodate, you know, twenty years of. Of of growth in the future or anything even close to that. Um, and Clark County needs to ensure that availability of of residential land. Um, because without that, how in the world could it happen? So um it then it becomes a a long winded process of trying to get the land and whatnot before. Even being able to uh start in a in a building mode and that already has added to the cost and taken away. The affordability and affordable housing. So um it just, if if we implement the act. In the way that it should be, I think that we will be in a much better place than where we are right now.
Okay, uh Gary, thoughts on the the next GMA update that's at its nascent stages now?
So we're already kind of deep in the fight on the details in the initial. Uh, detail, meaning buildable, buildable land. So we're already having uh some consternation by our. Our stakeholder experts and our consultant and. Uh, other organizations out in the community, we're we're still, we haven't gotten an update yet on where we're at so we can weigh in and give some. Different direction if we need to. Uh, the shoreline management, we're, you know, well on the way to adopting those changes, the amendments to that. Right now, uh, I don't want to make your head hurt, but here's what's making my head hurt right now. I think it's easy for us to fix the permitting department so we can get that those permits issued so we can get those two to three thousand. Homes rooftops up and get caught up on what we need right now. But what's happening, and this is the broader challenge you mentioned, you kind of touched on it a little bit. There is uh, there's no political will to streamline or fix. The portions of the growth management process uh that are broken. Uh, the Growth Management Act Board is a real challenge. There's no political will really to do anything with that and fix it. Where the political will is on the Democrat side. Uh, is, and you've probably gotten wind of it, but it's been going uh in earnest in uh. In the Democrat caucus to amend the Growth Management Act to add yet more layers of bureaucracy. Mainly focused on global warming, the economy. I can't imagine. What a nightmare that's going to be uh if we get additional factors between beyond uh the fourteen. All focused on global warming. Alls I see is EP EPA style consultants having to come in and drawing out layers of bureaucracy. Uh, and then on the other hand, uh probably the next follow on legislation will have to do with, well, we're going to have to have a carbon tax to help pay for this. You know, I can see costs going through the roof. Uh, so I I don't want to make your head hurt on that, but the industry needs to know. Because we need balance in our governance and we don't have it right now. We don't have anyone to say, no, that's not a good idea. Let's not get that out of committee once the legislature sits down. Uh, it would be great if we could streamline the processes that we have. Uh, my goal uh initially, when I first got on the coun- council. As we were dealing on on a number of levels uh with not being in compliance and trying to deal with the Growth Management Board in the Court of Appeals decisions. My goal as a lawyer and a former judge was let's get compliant. Let's get out of the penalty box and let's stay compliant. So there are ways to uh stay in compliance a- and we are right now and I I think you're well aware of that. And that brings us big dividends as far as uh low cost loans. Uh, grants, uh we'll we'll have more opportunity to grants, you know, all all the infrastructure we need to. To put in place and with our new uh process for development uh agreements. You know, it's a cost sharing. It's a public, private sharing to get the infrastructure in place. And having those low cost loans and grants available uh to us lessens the burden, not only on the building industry, but also on the county. To make up for our, some of our infrastructure uh gaps uh that we've kind of inherited because of poor planning. Or no planning uh back in the eighties. Uh, so uh as soon as we get these consultant reports back on what we can do. As far as affordable housing, you know, we get, get our buildable lands model, get our uh our. Population projections out of the state. Uh, you know, we're going to do everything we can to stay compliant and but build the way we need to build. For the for our future, for the future of your kids. Uh, maybe my, well, I've got two kids living here now, uh although they're in the service up in Tacoma area. But we need homes for our kids. We've got over a hundred thousand kids here in Clark County. Uh, be, and that's just who's here right now. Uh, and so we need to get our homes, our inventory up. Uh, we need to plan for the future and the infrastructure that goes along with it. Growth Management Act will help us do that. In a pragmatic way. It was never meant to slow growth, was never meant to stop growth. And I hear that all the time, especially in the Camas area. You know, we like the way it is. We moved here. I have my few acres. I want it to stay this way. You know, I'm sorry. Unless we start becoming a communist state and say, well, you can only have one kid now. Or you can't have any kids. You know, we're not going to stop. People from moving here and we need to accommodate them and we need to accommodate who's here right now. Uh, so uh, it's an arduous process and we're we're in it in earnest right now, although. Uh, and I think most people uh don't have a clue as to all the planning and work that goes into this um comprehensive update. Right? But I'm hoping we get it right. Uh, I'm hoping that we get ahead of the curve on the inventory that we're behind right now. We need to do that as a as a short term step. Um, I I'm hoping I touched on a number of the big issues, but. You need to get a Republican governor or at least win back our our Senate. Majority so we can put some sanity uh back in the the revenue and expense expense stream here in in Washington state. And and a lot of it's going to be driven by the GMA as far as uh how we accommodate that.
Now, thank you. Thank you for your thoughts on this. Um, we've got about uh ten minutes left of time, um and I I did want to make sure that uh we reserved enough time for sort of uh closing thoughts. Um, so I'll maybe go ahead and turn it over to Karen for maybe about three and a half minutes or so of uh again, why you're running and. Uh, what you hope to accomplish if you are elected to county council.
Well, I, I if you noticed that I was smiling a little bit when you talked about the climate change, Gary, um. One of the things that my opponent has talked about relative to the GMA. Uh, is exactly what you said, is that we need to examine the GMA relative to climate change. And that that starts by doing away with fossil fuels now and. Developing housing codes so that all houses are electric now. Well, you know what? If we do away with fossil fuels now, which is almost a a third of the source of our electricity in this county. There, that electricity is not even going to be stable. So anyway, we could go on and on about the problems of having a GMA revolve around climate change, but. I guess it reminds me a little bit too much of Al Gore. And he became wealthy, but it it really didn't do. A whole lot in terms of actually uh changing things for the better. So, um, you mentioned, why am I running? There's kind of a a long story and a short story, as I like to say. The longer story is that I feel like we go through stages in our lives. First with largely emphasizing our young families and then really focusing on our careers. And then an opportunity to give back. And that's where my focus is on public service in 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 order to be able to give back. And I can't think of a more important time. In America's history or in our county's history to be willing to step up and do that. Um, so that's the long answer. The short answer is that I was watching as the filings were coming in for District Three uh back before the primary. And I saw that our incumbent uh who had filed previously as a Republican uh did not file as a Republican. And I thought, well, you know, I'm a voter. As a voter, I'd like the opportunity to be able to vote. For a Republican and so I signed up right then and there uh and filed. And by golly, it it did turn out that way in the primary that we saw that Clark County did want the opportunity to vote. For a Republican and I I hope that it stays that way in the general. Time will tell uh come November three because. Uh, we have a a different body of of people voting, a much larger body of people voting. But um if it turns out the same way, I will, of course, be thrilled. Um, but either way, I think that there has been a good opportunity through this process. To let some of these ideals that I stand for of being pro business. Of being someone who stands for smaller government. Who does not want to see tax to the max, but instead wants to say, let's hold our our line on taxes and learn. Truly to cinch in, my goodness, in a five hundred million dollar budget of the county. We should be able to cinch in. And so I say, let's just do it. And when we have the will of the majority of council to do that, I'm confident that that can become the reality. And I know. That that would be a better county for our citizens, many of whom right now are still struggling. You know, nationally, we just read a couple of days ago that one out of five uh businesses through the pandemic has gone by the wayside. There are a lot of businesses in Clark County that have closed permanently. And that hurts individuals and that hurts families. And so this is not the time. And in my opinion, to raise taxes or frankly, to be voting for people where that is their um desire. So I I hope that um, as you read uh the things that I stand for and hear them. That it will sound appealing to you and to know that what I said earlier. My phone number is always out there, just like it is right now. And I look forward to communication from you in an ongoing way. So that we have that feedback necessary to make course changes when they are necessary. And they will be, and that's what we can do together. And I would really look forward to doing that with all of you.
Uh, thank you, Karen. And and yes, I appreciate uh your availability there. And I know Gary and I uh chat often. Um, and he's always made himself available to have uh these these fruitful discussions. So uh appreciate your candidacy. Um, Gary, some closing thoughts?
Well, thanks. Uh, so I just want to thank you for this opportunity to have this armchair talk. Uh, and and it's been a pleasure uh to hear Karen's thoughts. Thanks, Karen. It's uh nice to have someone on a Zoom not call me a super spreader. Uh, and other divisive comments that are not found in nature and are lies. Uh, so you know, I'm here to serve. And, you know, I want the county staff uh from the executive branch and certainly. Uh, I want that to be the culture of everyone that is in Clark County uh building. And buildings to serve. You know, I think some of our departments do that. That's, that's my mantra. I I don't need to be doing this. I enjoy doing it. I love people. I like talking to people. I'm a, I like to fix problems. I like to make things efficient. That's why I did well in the military and rose through the ranks. So if the people want to keep me in place, I look forward to working with Karen. And uh the rest of the council, uh because I think we can provide really good governance. Uh, I've I heard another thing out there that really was disturbing to me. It's kind of. Uh, some, and it's all coming from the liberal side that somehow if you express a conservative view. Then you've become partisan. And and I've heard this argument uh from my opponent that, well, we want to get partisan politics out of the Clark County Council. I mean, John Blum kind of said that too. Yeah, we want to make this nonpartisan. Now, that's about a hundred percent of all of our votes and and work we do is nonpartisan. It is just for the benefit. Of the county and the people in this county. We want to make it a better place to live and retain uh the quality of life that we have here. But if you vote against something, oh, of a sudden, and it's because of a conservative view. Uh, that you're, that's a partisan vote. That simply is not true. Um, I want, so I want to just kind of spout off about that because it's recently, it's been irking me that I've heard that. I mean, it's divisive and it's not true. Uh, I think uh, and I think Karen's got a pure heart. I do too. I just want to serve. Uh, this community to the best of my abilities and based on my long uh history of serving. uh, this community to the best of my abilities and based on my long, uh, history of service, I want to continue. So thanks again for your support. Thanks for this opportunity. And Karen, it was great seeing you, even though it was uh, hopefully we'll have, uh, get rid of this pandemic and get back to some normal times.
I think we're all, all very much looking forward to, to being able to be in the same room with one another and, uh, and, and get, get back to business. Um, so I, I did want to take this opportunity, a- again, on behalf of the Building Industry Association uh, and our presenting sponsor, A New Traditions Home tonight, uh, to thank all of the candidates that we've had over, uh, the last two evenings. I think it's been, uh, tremendous valuable service to the, the voting public to get to know our folks and, uh, in particular, uh, to focus in on these very, very critical issues of housing uh, and housing affordability, uh, here in Clark County. I want to pay specific thanks to, uh, Gary and, uh, Karen for the discussion this evening. Um, had a, a very enjoyable time. Um, and again, uh, we'll, we'll hopefully, uh, get, uh, this political side of it done with on November third and begin to get to the business of, uh, of governance. So again, I want to thank you so much and, uh, to all those watching on Facebook and will be watching this on recording. Thank you so much and, uh, have a good evening. Thanks. Bye.